It is six o'clock.
It's not six, okay.
I also have to fix it every time I turn my phone on and off. It starts vibrating when I get texts.
Okay.
Which is no good because I sleep with the phone.
It'll be six o'clock when Sam gets here.
And like, people think that it's fun to sometimes like...
This is the steady pace of...
But I just have to remember every time I turn it on and off, I have to go in and reset it and default. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Meeting, City of Capitola. Please give us a roll call.
Councilmember story.
Finally here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Brooks.
Here.
Councilmember Bottorff.
Here.
And Mayor Bertrand.
Okay.
Actually, I should say councilmember and mayor and chair and you're playing parts tonight.
Oh, come on. Oh, that's right. This is the successor agency, right? Okay, Sam, lead us all, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have additional materials?
None.
Okay. Any additions and deletions to the agenda?
No changes.
Okay. This is a time for public comment. Anyone in the audience can speak on any item not on the agenda today. Seeing none, let's go back to City Council. And City Council's successor treasurer and staff comments and City Council, any comments from the City Council? Yes?
I'd just like to take a minute to acknowledge May 15th is Peace Officers Memorial Day and thank all our police officers for what they do every day.
Any other comments? Okay, staff comments.
Just a very short update. This is the time of year when we usually close the lagoon at SoCal Creek in advance of Memorial Day. Unfortunately, with the forecast rain and the rain we're getting, I think, as we speak, it's thrown our plans a little bit awry. So we'll be making a call here shortly about whether or not we can proceed with the operating under our permits, because our permits have strict requirements about when we can do the work, if there's rain in the forecast or not, about whether or not we're going to begin next week or whether we have to push it back a week. So just to let everybody know, it's not, if you don't see the work starting on Monday, I'll let you know on Friday, but we may or may not be able to close the lagoon in advance of Memorial Day this year.
Okay. No more comments. Moving along to consent calendar, we have one item. Is there a motion? Oh, excuse me. Anyone in the audience or any comments from City Council on the consent calendar? Seeing none, back for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's go on to government hearing. Presentation of the proposed 2019-2020 fiscal year budget. Again, I think this is going to come up and our finance director is going to take us on this, or you're going to give an introduction. Thank you.
I'm going to kick this off, do the first couple slides. Before we get started in the budget hearings this year, I want to remind everybody, this is the first in our series of budget hearings and the intent tonight is really to get, outline the proposed budget to the council and the community. In addition, identify areas of questions or concerns or further research that council would like to see us cover in future hearings. In addition, I want to thank Jim and department heads and everybody in finance for all the great work in preparing the budget that you have before you and is available on our website. It takes a big effort every year. I always appreciate the opportunity to go through and review it. I think it provides a great insight into how our city operates. I have been doing this for, I'm not sure if this is the ninth or 10th budget I've done, but nevertheless, each time I come up with questions, sometimes the same ones as from previous years, but it's always good to go back and take a look through this stuff. So our first slide, you know, overall, our economy remains stable. That is, we're not seeing significant declines in any major revenue sources. However, we are experiencing relatively slow growth, particularly in the sales tax and TOT arenas. Overall, this budget is largely a status quo budget. The primary exception would be in the recreation division, where we're talking about offering new youth programs in this coming fiscal year. That includes 1.25 new positions, 1.25 full-time equivalents, which would be increasing a three-quarter time rec assistant to full-time and adding a recreation assistant to be devoted to those youth programs, and we'll talk more about that later in the presentation tonight. And it also includes the additional funding that was allocated for youth and business groups as part of Measure J, and we'll be talking about that, seeking council guidance on how to expend some of those funds later this evening. Overall, we have good news with our general fund. We have an estimated fund balance that will be ending this fiscal year, which is coming up in June 30th, a little more than a month from now, at about $1.3 million, $1.3 million in fund balance. That is in addition to our emergency and contingency and other reserve funds. We will be talking about that later this evening and propose at least starting the conversation about maybe some one-time allocations of that fund balance for specific council priorities. The fund, the budget proposes to maintain our reserves at our policy levels of 10% for our emergency reserve and 15% for our contingency reserve. Obviously, the library is a huge focus for us as we move forward. This will be the first year, we hope, we anticipate, of new cannabis business tax revenue. We've projected two operators for half of a year in this budget for about $250,000. We believe that's a conservative but reasonable estimate of potential revenue, but obviously being the first year of something, there's some risk involved in that revenue. Big picture is the PERS cost increases continue to be a significant threat and a significant diversion of funds from other priorities, and it will continue to be for several more fiscal years before they stabilize out. In addition, and you've heard me say this at budget hearings for time eternal, the city's heavy reliance on sales tax remains problematic and challenging and is something we need to think about as we move forward. This is the overall summary at the front end of our budget. The budget you see before you today is balanced. I think we're about $3,000 to the good. You can see there also the fund balance that we project of a little bit over $1.3 million in fund balance. Next year, we start to show budget problems, and again, this is largely driven by the known colas for our employees coupled with the PERS cost increases that we know are coming. So some of the assumptions that went into the generation of this budget, we have very good handle on the property tax. It's projected at a four and a half percent growth for next year. The sales tax number deserves a little bit of explanation because from where we think it's going to end this year, it's actually down slightly. Part of that, though, is due to the fact that this fiscal year, we got money that wasn't paid last fiscal year because the state implemented this new tax payment system. So our figures this year, we think, are about $200,000 artificially high, which really should be attributed to the prior year. So we're showing sales tax is actually a $100,000 decrease from where we end, we think we're going to end this year, and we still have data to come in this year. So that actually represents a minor growth in actual economic activity that we're projecting, but it is a decrease year over year. Sales tax, the district taxes, we have not been seeing growth. That's Measure F and Measure O, so we're projecting them at flat. The difference you'll recall between the sales tax, the 1% and the district taxes is that we have a few large taxpayers who don't pay district taxes because their buyers are predominantly not located within the cities. You can think car parts or heavy machine sales that may be selling outside the city. The TOT, we're projecting relatively small growth. This is essentially consistent with what we've been seeing, about 1%. Parking, 1% increase in overall parking revenue. We don't have changes in the parking rates, and so this would simply do, would be due to increased usage. Parking citations, we had a small dip this year. We're projecting that that will rebound. That was due to some injuries and some outage time where we weren't going to have a full fleet of parking enforcement officers working. So I probably covered a couple of these things already. I talked about the sales tax continues to slow and remains heavily reliant on auto sales for growth. That has been our primary growth engine in our sales tax for the last several years. We are heavily reliant on our top 25 sales tax generators, which represent about 63% of the total. Recall that sales tax is about half of our overall budget. So a significant portion of our budget comes from just 25 sales taxpayers. As I mentioned before, the district tax remains flat, property tax, and that's really not, that's just due to Prop 13 reassessments. The Capitol Mall sale was a significant bump in property tax, as well as just the continued turnover in the residential real estate market. TOT, as I mentioned, you know, it's, our hotels do very, very well. They have very high occupancies. There's new rooms coming on the market. So the growth has been relatively flat because it's really capped out at just room rates, and room rates are considered quite high already. We are hoping in this coming year that with our new partner, HDL, to do some audits that we hope could yield some additional TOT moving forward, but at this point, this budget doesn't include any new program TOT revenue associated with that. And as I mentioned before, it's the first year of the cannabis business tax, and we anticipated six months' worth of revenue from two retailers, and we're showing the parking revenue growth slowing, where we'd seen a bump previously when we went to the three-hour time limit in the Village. We're thinking that that bump is probably over at this point. As I mentioned before, the unfunded liability, the UAL payments are a major cost driver in the budget. To put it in perspective, in 1617, a couple of years ago, it was $835,000 that we had to pay towards CalPERS for the unfunded liability. By 2425, which is kind of where we hit the peak, it'll be 2.3 million. So that essentially is one and a half district taxes, if you will, because our district tax or quarter cent taxes are about $1 million a year. So if we were still at that same, if we had a fixed rate mortgage, if you will, we would have about $1.5 million more in 2425 available to spend on other priorities that we won't have. Library, as I mentioned before, is anticipated for completion about a year from now, a little bit less at this point. The budget does include some good news. We've seen some decreases in our liability insurance premium. This is due to some heavier claims that we had in the past, moving off of our experience factors that we use with our risk JPA. In addition, I want to acknowledge all the work that the staff has done on really driving down our work comp rates. We have some of the lowest work comp rates for a city of our size, if any I've ever seen, and that's really attributable to great workplace practice habits by our employees and management by our department heads. So one of the things we do, as council knows every year, is we try to look out ahead to see where the problems are and what the scale of the problem is going to be. And so we use a multi-year model where we are assuming certain rates of property tax growth, sales tax growth, TOT growth. We will pencil in potentially looking at new hotel revenue if we were to get a new hotel and what our cannabis tax might grow at. And you can see that this year's budget's balanced, moving ahead, we start to have problems pretty quickly into the future. To give you an understanding of what's driving those, oh, and so when you look at the multi-year assumptions, you'll see some funky things where we have essentially, you know, ones and zeros in our sales tax, then we actually have a 5% decline in 2022. That's frankly, at this point, is just a placeholder, and it's really around the mall, mall redevelopment, that if the mall were to redevelop, we see a potential loss of a chunk, decent chunk of sales tax. And then essentially flat during the construction phase and then higher growth in the sales tax in the out years. To give you a feeling for what's driving the deficits, about $250,000 a year increase comes from essentially cost of living increases for our employees. That's ballpark figure, obviously, it's subject to year-to-year negotiations, but that's a reasonable figure to use in terms of your own thinking. In addition, it's about $250,000 a year through this cycle for CalPERS. So between those two, that's about $500,000 a year of budget growth on the expenditure side that we experience without changes in our service delivery model. In addition, there are other things that come up year to year. The larger figure next year is set, in some senses, by a good, piece of good news is that with our formulas for our contingency and emergency reserve, they're set at a certain percentage of our expenditures, and as expenditures rise, we have to put more money into the contingency and emergency reserve, and there's a pretty healthy chunk that we're going to have to put in next year, which is also a piece of the increase that you see. So this is what graphically our five-year projection. I will note that the five-year projection doesn't include allocating any of the Measure F funds into the general fund to help with these things. I think we've all know that as we get further into Measure F, we're going to have to talk about, unless we have new revenues coming online, talk about some of those Measure F funds coming in to support the police department, but at this point, this projection doesn't include any of that district tax coming in for other general fund purposes. So this budget was built up on the budget principles that this council adopted earlier this winter. They're based on three basic fiscal policies about a balanced budget and ensuring that we're balanced, using one-time revenues for one-time expenditures, and that we plan for future cost increases and think about where we're going to go into the future. Our three public service principles about improving transparency, high priority community places on the public safety, and then always looking at service level increases with our long-term costs. And then public improvements, really geared towards making sure that we're delivering the high-quality public improvements to our community that everyone expects. So this is a lot on a slide. It's in your budget and the city manager's message, but what we did was we took all the key projects and programs that the council identified and voted on during the budget process, assigned to lead department, and then identified specific outcomes for them so we can track them throughout the year. Many of these projects are already underway. For example, we'll be talking about the CalPERS costs a lot this evening. We have an RFQ out for somebody to help us with an evaluation of our grant program. The Finance Advisory Committee, I know, is already talking about some future revenue ideas that they want to explore. Mall redevelopment is a huge project. I think it's going to be, you know, for the Community Development Department and the City Managers Department, one of our key focuses as we move forward into this next year. The police department has already done a great evaluation of our parking meter technology and its usability, and I think it was a good one that Councilmember Peterson brought up because when we went and did sort of a self-audit, it seemed like there was a lot of room for improvement there, and we do plan to roll that out in the near future. The REC strategic plan, the RFQ, is out and in. Do we have some, I think we have some middles on that one, so we'll begin work on that shortly. Coastal Commission zoning certification, for Katie's sake, we won't spend too much time talking about this evening, but we will be talking about it at future meetings. And the cannabis retail license process is moving forward, and we hope to have two potential licensees coming up here in the next couple of weeks that then can start working with the planning department, the planning commission on permits to begin their operation. We talked about the Children's Fund for youth programming. That's in the proposed budget. The proposed budget also reallocated the Freed Up General Fund into the Facilities Fund, and we'll talk about some uses for that to help improve the community center. We're continuing to work with Central Fire on the lifeguard services relationship, State of the City report, this is part of that, is also included in the budget message at the front of the budget. We'll be talking more about the funded CIPs, the library and Wharf, and then the unfunded CIPs more this evening. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jim to talk about the hard numbers a little bit more.
Sure. So this slide up here is just showing our revenue summary by major category, and the takeaway I take from this is 80%, almost 80% of our revenue is coming from taxes, and about 50% of that is sales tax. So sales tax, like Jamie was saying earlier, we have a slight dip in 1718 where the state wasn't paying us timely, and it goes up a little bit this year when they made up for those payments, but overall, when you look at those columns, it's pretty flat for the last five years. Property tax, on the other hand, continues steady growth, as Jamie had mentioned, anywhere from about 4% to 6% over this timeframe. And then TOT, the one bump that you do see in the 1819 year is just with the passage of Measure J, the 1.25% now goes in. So without that Measure J, this would be completely flat across the board as well. On the expenditure side, the big thing here is we're a service industry, so about almost 60% of our expenditures are personnel-related, which shows right here, so 66% personnel and then 20% contract services, and then the rest is made up by just the other small categories that are up there. By departments, again, police and Public Works are our two biggest departments, so police is just under 48% of the budget and Public Works is just under 20%, and then the other 32 is the rest of the departments. So department highlights, in the City Council Department, we were able to reduce contract services by using some of the TOT restricted revenue that we can give to local business groups. So the Chamber used to be funded out of the $30,000 a year, used to come out of City Council, is now coming out of those. And then some of the regional homeless needs was funded out of the City Council budget, is now coming out of some of the restricted money. The other change was we added a couple of memberships, MBEP, the 4Cs, and the Jet Noise Roundtable. Total of those is about 13,000.
Those were found in other places in the budget, so these aren't new expenditures. We just sort of realized that that's probably the better place to put them. So if you see the bump in council memberships, that's what that's attributable to.
The City Attorney budget really is no change for this year. On the City Manager budget, the big change was bringing in the information systems technician. We used to contract that out. That wasn't working so well for us, so we brought that in and have a full-time staff now that you met a few council meetings ago, Heather. And then in the Finance Department, as Jamie mentioned, we're getting ready to launch our TOT and short-term vacation rental audit enforcement program. For the Police Department, their highlights for this upcoming year is going to be implementation of a new records management system, completing the licensing of two retail cannabis locations, and also developing the audit and inspection plan, expansion of the Neighborhood Watch program that was launched last year, successfully complete training for a program for the new officers that are going through the police academy, and then, as Jamie mentioned, also assessing the parking meter program and equipment and trying to improve the user experience. For Public Works, probably the biggest as far as change is converting, we had one employee that was halftime mechanic up in the courtyard and halftime maintenance worker, doing some meter maintenance and other maintenance work as well. He's now been converted to a full-time mechanic. Big projects are the library and Park Avenue sidewalks, library and construction, Park Avenue's out to bid right now, continue developing permitting and funding for the Wharf, the Rispin Park project, and then we're going to talk a little bit more about continuing efforts to complete all the funded CIP projects, and then as well as doing a complete full review and evaluation of the CIP program. Community development, they have a couple of big things up there, working with the mall ownership group is huge for us right now, the two conditional use permits for the licensed cannabis retail stores, and then Jamie already mentioned the zoning code update and submittal to the Coastal Commission for LCP certification, and then also working with regional partners towards a regional bike share program. For Museum, their big project for this year is digitizing media for long-term preservation to preserve those historical records, and then Art and Culture Commission is going to be, is going to be focused on public art on 41st Avenue corridor. And library. For the Recreation Department, so this is probably where most of our changes are happening. So as Jamie mentioned, we're working on the strategic plan. We've just got the bids back, or the proposals back, so we'll see what that looks like. Piloting a new after-school program for teen and younger youth in partnership with SoCal Union, and we have some more information on that later on in the presentation. Growing the relationship that we started this year with Central Fire to provide lifeguard services and training for our junior lifeguard instructors, working with Public Works to kind of spruce up the community center, painting and a couple other smaller projects, but just make it look a little more appealing, and then complete an American Camp accreditation process for Camp Capitola. So as far as the new programs, the Teen Club is to provide youth opportunity to improve leadership and decision-making for pro-social interests and create social-emotional peer interaction and enhance life, and Nikki can expand upon that because that is out of my wheelhouse. And also, the program, our plan is to have a high staff to participant ratio of one staff for every 10 participants. It will be located at New Brighton Middle School to enhance school connectivity and try to pick up some of the fifth graders as they come through, and then the enrollment by day is to accommodate for the students that are in social clubs, sports, whatever other activities. That way, they can come on days that they're available. They don't have to register for a month at a time when they can't participate the full month. On the K through 5th grade, it's intended to provide an enrichment program that exposes youth to diverse recreation activities. We're still trying to nail down our transportation needs on that, so that'll, that project or program right there is still evolving as we speak right now.
I want to add on this. So you saw the FTEs that were associated with this, and we talked about them earlier in the budget, and one of the things that Nikki and I have worked on a little bit is that there's a balancing between those staffing positions and actual enrollment in this program. And so, just so council's aware, just because we authorize the staff doesn't mean we're going to go out and hire everybody on day one. It's going to be an iterative process where we're looking at enrollments and identifying when we have the actual staff needs and figuring out a balancing between the two, because so we don't want to dive into the pool before just figuring out if there's water in it. That's our first step, so. That helps council understand?
So the other new programs that we have is the youth program funding coming from Measure J. So for this year, we're estimating about 51,500 available, 28,000, almost 29,000 of those dollars have already been programmed to existing community grants for youth programs. So that leaves about 22,800 available in this year for additional youth programs. That we'll be looking for council direction on that in a couple more slides. On the Capitol Improvement Project front, so the two projects that are, that we currently have going are the library, which is under construction, expected to be completed around a year from now, and then Park Avenue sidewalks out to bid. That was one that was just approved, I believe, at the last council meeting. Bids are due on June 5th, and we think it, anticipate completion end of summer, early fall this year. For Measure F, I want to give a little bit of a history on Measure F, so we're a year and a half into receiving Measure F revenue, so the column on, well, the left column is the projects. The second column is the budget for this year. The majority of the money is programmed to the Wharf. Not quite sure how much of that'll actually move forward, but that's where it's sitting right now. The jetty in the flume, as you're aware, is kind of on hold as we wait for the outcome of the grant application. So in prior years, we've, to date, we've received about 1.6 million, and we've programmed or appropriated all 1.6 as listed up there with the Wharf at 314, jetty at 650,000, flume at 500. We did Wharf repairs. The first year, we had Measure F money of 47,000, and then Measure F also contributed to the purchase of the beach loader, about 50% of the cost of the beach loader. And then the far right column shows what we've actually spent out of those approved So this is a kind of a CIP project update, so those first four up there, 38th Avenue sidewalks, the 2018 Slurry Seal, Jade Street Community Center, and Jewel Box are all completed, and then Public Works will be coming back next month to council to review the Jewel Box traffic calming, what the results were of the counts before and after. The library is, and the Park Avenue sidewalks, we've talked about already. Park Avenue slope repair is in review by, with Caltrans right now, with a budget of about 500,000, and we expect to construct in 2019.
And that's the section of Park Avenue that failed with the eucalyptus fell on it? And we believe that there is FEMA money?
FHWA.
FHWA money that will pay for that, so that's improvement that we obviously need because we have the K-rail up there now.
The next one up there, Bremmer Street Improvements is in design with an anticipated budget of 770,000. We expect to start constructing next spring. Rispin Park is in design, $500,000 budget, and hope to start constructing fall of this year. The Monterey Park Avenue Trail is currently in review by the RTC with a $250,000 budget that we have not scheduled yet, awaiting their review. The jetty in Flume, as I mentioned, total budget of 1.6 is on hold, awaiting the grant decision. Wharf is in design. Right now, we're saying 6 to 9 million and possibly starting construction in 2021. Cap Ave, Bay Avenue Roundabout and Underground, we're working with PG&E and AT&amp;T right now. Budget is 45,000, and we'll get that scheduled once we get through, working with, get everything worked out with PG&E and AT&amp;T. And then 41st Avenue Signal Coordination, working with Caltrans. There's a $400,000 grant out there. I think it's the Airboard, Airboard grant that's out there. On the Equipment Fund ISF, so we're requesting four purchases this year. The first is a mini-sweeper for Public Works and also a... The first is a mini sweeper for Public Works, and also a ditch witch for Public Works. The mini street sweeper is going to replace the large one or is in addition to the large one, it's replacing?
So, so the street sweeper is actually represents a little bit of a different strategy that we haven't employed in the past. And historically, we've bought a new street sweeper about every five years, and we buy the big, heavy industrial street sweeper. And then the five-year-old street sweeper goes in as our backup. And, and the five-year replacement cycle is pretty, pretty fast, they're pretty expensive vehicles. And it's driven by the amount of usage, these things are running a lot. And one of the things that Steve and I are proposing here is to get a mini street sweeper, which would be probably more appropriate for a lot of our smaller streets. We don't necessarily need the same kind of street sweeper that you'd use up and down Forty First Avenue or on Bay to try to limit the runtime on the heavy-duty street sweeper and then use the smaller street sweeper on, you know, in the neighborhoods more, which hopefully then we end up with a lower sort of overall amortized cost over multiple years. So this is a little bit of a new proposal, but Steve and I think that it's a, it's a good strategy to try to draw more life out of the heavy-duty, bigger street sweeper and then use this mini street sweeper to cut down on runtime.
Configuration-wise, is this something similar to like what they'd use in industrial parking lots, is it that, okay?
Yeah, exactly.
Same operator?
Our guys operate it, our guys in Gal, our guys at this stage, but our crew operates the street sweeper.
So we don't need a new person?
No, no, there's no, no new licenses or certifications or a new person. Frank, I mean, we have somebody, I think, I want to say about thirty hours a week runs the sweeper. So what they would hopefully then end up doing is, is fifteen hours in the big one and fifteen hours in the small one, and then we double the life of our quarter of a million dollar sweeper. That's the goal.
And then the other two pieces of equipment up there for the Police Department, a Police Sergeant Vehicle as well as a replacement police motorcycle. On the Facilities Fund, we're actually increasing funding from the General Fund by utilizing some of the freed-up dollars that were previously spent for, on the Community Grant Program. If we didn't have those extra Measure J dollars funding that, we would have actually been decreasing our contribution to the Facilities Fund, so that was pretty big help right there. So we were able to program a hundred and eight thousand. Last year, we had ninety thousand going in, and we were bouncing back and forth as we were trying to budget, balance the budget between seventy and eighty, and then we realized that we had that. Were able to bump it up to one oh eight. And then out of that one oh eight, we're programming about fifty thousand for the Community Center improvements that I mentioned earlier. And we anticipate an ending fund balance on June thirtieth of next year of about four hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
So for the Community Center improvements, right now, we're targeting interior paint, ADAing the front door so that they, there's a, you know, button you can hit and the front door will open, and probably some interior furniture. You know, we're obviously trying to balance these expenditures with the fact that our lease expires, I want to say in thirteen, twelve years with the school district, and we've in the past indicated to them that we didn't want to make sort of heavy, long-term, fifty-year investments in new H Vacs, roofs, sewer lines, things like that, so we were trying to target things that were more kind of ongoing. So the interior paint, the ADA doors, really something that should happen, and then the furniture is obviously something that, you know, wouldn't be expected to have a twenty-five-year life cycle in any scenario.
How about the kitchen, I know it's sort of unfunctional and so that limits our activities, who could rent it out for?
Well, you're absolutely right, the kitchen is not very functional, and that was actually on Nikki's first list of items to address. The challenge is, is, number one is, is you start bumping up against, you know, how much money do you have? And number two is, is if we're gonna do a major kitchen renovation or do something that allows us to do more with the kitchen, how does that play in with the overall lease? So the paint, the ADA front door and the furniture seem to us like the most logical thing, but the kitchen's certainly on top of everyone's list as well.
And then so, so we're projecting that, as Jamie mentioned, that we're gonna end this year with about one point three million dollars of General Fund fund balance. We would recommend maintaining a minimum of eight hundred thousand, which is about half a percent of our General Fund. And so that leaves five hundred thousand that could potentially be programmed into other areas. And so we put up some potential uses of what those, what we could do with that fund balance. And so one of them is, obviously, leave it intact for future budget shortfalls. We could deposit into the Purse Trust, right now, we're sitting at about eight hundred and forty-five thousand in the Purse Trust. We could pay down principal on the outstanding Pacific Cove debt. So that debt that was refinanced in two thousand twelve originally had a five point one four percent interest rate. When we refinanced it, it dropped to three point two five. It's gonna go back to at least five point one four in twenty twenty-two. So it's set to go to the greater of either the five point one four or the U S Treasury ten-year plus three percent, which right now would be about five and a half, five point four percent. So that interest rate is going to go up for sure in the next three years.
What was that, what's the total amount of that loan?
It is, right now, the balance is one point two million, I believe.
So by way of a little bit more background, first off, I, I think that the eight hundred thousand is about five percent of the General Fund, not half a percent. And secondarily, so when we took out the original Pat Cove debt, this was to finance the closure of the par. This was to finance the closure of the park, I'm sorry, we have two pieces of debt on Pat Cove, one was to build the parking lot, one was to finance the closure. So, so this was originally, it's a twenty-year debt, and the first ten were fixed, and then we went variable ten years out, it's with Santa Cruz County Bank. And so we received settlement with our insurance brokers after the flood, and we used that settlement money to pay down some of that debt, because a lot of the debt was associated with costs that were incurred because of it. So I want to say that we have about fourteen total, sixteen total years of payments on that. So we have six years where we're into the variable interest rate. So there may be an advantage to trying to work towards paying that down so we're not carrying principal into that variable interest rate environment, starting in twenty twenty-two.
And then a couple other options would be to increase the deposits into the Facilities Reserve, or we could fund additional C I P projects, or any combination of those. And just on the next slide, just as a reminder, when we talked about the C I P and the council goals, we wanted to list the projects that came up when we were going through the budget principles. So we have Claire Street pedestrian improvements, Claire Street improvements near Trader Joe's, which is a traffic signal, Capitola Avenue and sidewalk, and retaining wall in the three hundred block, Fanmar Street improvements, drainage and roadway, street improvements from City Hall to Fanmar, relocation of portable toilets at McGregor Park, and Wharf improvements. And then on the kind of Public Works C I P wishlist, we added Forty First Avenue Rehab, Citywide Slurry Seal, and then Rispin Park. So those were projects that came out of that. Goal set, the principal, budget principles and goal setting, as well as just kind of what we have. So tonight, our next steps, identify any questions, we can answer as many questions as you have. And then, any issues for follow-up that you would like us to bring back? We'd like some direction on uses, or at least start the discussion on uses for the twenty-two thousand, twenty-two thousand eight hundred in youth T O T funds, and then initial discussions on, on uses of the General Fund balance. We had a FAC meeting last night, and they asked me to bring back some additional information before they're ready to make a recommendation. So part of it was, as Councilmember Brooks was saying, what is, some more information on that loan, when does it, what's the balance, when's it pay off, and those good things. And then we'll be back on May twenty-ninth for a special council meeting to go over whatever changes we make between now and then. And that completes the presentation, and we're happy to take questions.
So who would like to jump in, questions of Jim and our City Manager? First of all, thank you for the presentation and the state of the city presentation also, thank you. Okay, Sam, please?
Thank you. Thank you for that overview and that presentation, Jim. I guess I want to start off by asking, what's a ditch witch?
I could take a style out of it, but I'm like.
A ditch witch is a trade name for a piece of equipment that is a vacuum, it's a portable, a large trailer-mounted vacuum. We use it to clean out our storm drain inlets, which we're required to do every year before the rainy season, part of our stormwater program. So it's called ditch witch because you can also use it for locating utilities in a roadway as part of your project, so, but we use it for it.
All right, good. And also, I wondered, the staff was recommending leaving eight hundred thousand of the fund balance, I was just curious why that number, is there some logic, or is it just a comfortable number to work with?
Well, I mean, I think, I think the basic answer is it's a comfortable number to work with. I think that what we've experienced is year to year, there's obviously in a budget this size, with so many things that are beyond the city's control, there's variability. And we've had years that have closed out a couple hundred thousand dollars or more the wrong direction. And so this provides a little bit of cushion, also, if there's an urgent need that comes up during the year, it's a source of funding that can be used. So there's not, we don't have a policy about maintaining a five percent fund balance. We do have policies about our reserves, emergency and contingency reserve levels. I think that's just a, it's a target figure that I think we would suggest. Keep in mind that during the economic downturn, we lost, I think it was one point eight million dollars of sales tax over about a six-quarter period as the economy tanked. So that's the scale of variability we can have, particularly with sales tax. The other, the other revenue streams are a little bit more predictable, but that is a little bit of a buffer to help sort of manage into a downturn when it comes up.
Okay, thank you. And on the C I P schedule, we, there was a list here, and then I was wondering if we could be given, because it wasn't, I didn't notice it in the notebook, but the schedule of the funded portion and, and the budget remaining for each of these particular projects. As we, you know, attempt to evaluate them, determine whether we want to shift any of that fund balance into the C I P.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but this slide here, this is the funded amount, is that? Yeah, now, I guess the Wharf does not have six to nine million, so that would be the one, the one. But so, for example, the Roundabout, we've appropriated forty-five at this point, which is really just the design cost to get the undergrounding going. There's two fifty for the Monterey Park Avenue Trail to get out of Pat Cove here, five hundred at this point for Rispin Park. Rispin, I think we do think is probably underfunded at this point, Steve, I'll let you chime in.
Yeah, and I was just gonna add that the budget amount, like on the, well, Jimmy's just looking at the Monterey Rail Trail or Monterey Park Trail, that is, two hundred, two hundred of that is actually grant money we have from the R T C. So this is a combination of money that's been budgeted over the years. And that'd be, you know, we can certainly come back with more details on each project and what the money is and what the remaining balance is.
Yeah, I think before we, as we finish up, because I was unclear, we're using budgeted amount and funded amount, and in my mind, there, there's a distinction, I'm not.
That's correct.
Yeah, I'm not clear, you know, some of those seem to be total budget cost, but not necessarily defining how much we've been able to sock away to complete them, so.
We can come up with that.
We'll clarify that, and I think, I think this list generally is what's funded with the exception of the Wharf.
Also, in the report and in the pro forma budget, the City Attorney is flat-funded. Is that pursuant to recent developments, is that still a good estimation? And I'll just leave the question there, and maybe you could bring it back to us at a future date in the appropriate setting. When, when is it anticipated that the cannabis tax, well, when will the permit, when will the stores actually open so that the tax will start, will start to be generated?
So it's a little bit outside of the city's control to some degree. We anticipate issuing our preliminary award, which is basically the top two, top two of the fourteen applicants that we got. I want to say in the next two weeks. So then at that point, they have six months to get their land use permits from the Planning Department and from the Planning Commission. So if they're diligent, I would expect that then they have leases in place, which I know some of them do. They may be able to move relatively quickly and get in front of the Planning Commission and get their permits and get themselves open. Like I said before, this budget is anticipating six months of revenue from two, so that would mean them opening by January first, twenty twenty, which I think is a reasonable timeline to get from A to B, but obviously, if somebody gets an initial award and then can't get a lease, throws a wrinkle in those, in those projections. Alternatively, the numbers, I think, I'm hoping are a little bit low, and so it's possible that, you know, either one, or even if it was for, one was only open for three months, that the budget number is attainable.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I think that's a realistic assumption, I was just, you know, curious about what we were assuming for budgeting purposes of the revenue. And the other, on the, on the revenue side, once again, under property taxes and vehicle motor in lieu, we're projecting like a six point six percent increase. And I was, yeah, that's part of the property tax, so are we still optimistic that the property tax revenues are gonna increase themselves four and a half percent?
I, I think that the county gave us a little bit of a low estimate last year, so the six point four six is an increase over last year's budget. It's about four and a half percent over what we actually received this year, which is the information I got from the county this year.
Okay. But are we seeing that, is that strictly based on turnover or activity in the market? Because it doesn't seem that, that prices are increasing any further.
No, I would assume it's turnover.
So you have two drivers of that, one is, is just the two percent Prop thirteen, and then the other driver is turnover. So, you know, you see about, you know, two percent is what, in theory, if nothing sold or was reassessed in the city or was built, that's what we would see. And then all, secondarily, is the turnover. The four point five, I think we're pretty confident in that four point five figure for next year. Of all of our revenue projections, that's probably one that we're the most comfortable with, I think, yeah. That's one of the most stable, in terms of, you know, the parking citations, the T O T, the sales tax, those are the ones that are harder to predict.
I'll, I'll rely on that optimism then, thank you.
Or, or worry about the other ones more, how about that?
Those are, those are my questions, thank you, thank you, Mary.
Okay, thank you, Sam, Kristen?
Yeah, I have one, some of my questions were already answered in the presentation, or Sam beat me to it. But one that I have is in regard to our Teen Club program through recreation. I think it's a great idea, especially to identify the kinds of youth that would want to be involved in our boards and commissions, that we have seats for youth now. One of the things I'm curious about, though, is that with the enrollment by day model and the idea that we're gonna have the employment based on enrollment, my question would be, what would our plan be if no one shows up on any given day? Is this gonna become an on-call position, assuming that someone shows up? Or if it's enrollment by day and no one enrolls for any given day, are we paying someone to essentially sit in a room by themselves?
I see, yeah, that's a, that's a great question. So enrollment by day would be that I'm going to sign up for Mondays.
Oh, I see.
And then I'm gonna sign up for Tuesdays, so that way, within each month of the program or by session is kind of the model I'm thinking about going with. So that the idea is that on Mondays is the days that we're going to do archery for Teen Club. And that's gonna have a six-week session. So for that six-week session, we will have a group of participants that will sign up for those Mondays, and then we know how to staff that based on the enrollment.
Perfect, thank you. Oh, that was it, yeah, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Going back to the transient occupancy tax, it looks like it flattens out on your bars on page ten of our packet there. Is the increase from ten, that we went, that was voter approved from ten? Is the increase from ten that we went, that was voter approved from ten to twelve percent reflected here?
Yeah, that was, that's the jump right there.
That's the little, okay.
So from seventeen eighteen to, actual to the eighteen nineteen adopted, that's the amended adopted is the one point two five percent of the general fund portion.
Okay, thank you. And then I just was looking for some clarification on, we have a couple, three different or four different reserves. So we have the emergency reserve, contingency reserve, PERS contingency reserve, and then facilities reserve. And from your recommendations on how to utilize the fund balance, you mentioned the facilities reserve. I, what I'm trying to figure out is the differences between, and I know there's, it explains it here, but they just sound really similar. The emergency reserve and the contingency reserve together as a whole. And then the facilities reserve, and I just wrote down a question, it's like, what is considered, considered a major repair? Because if we had a major repair like Pat Cove, for instance, that was pulled out of our contingency reserve, our emergency reserve. And it just seems that it kind of falls into all the same place. So when we're thinking about allocating, allocating those dollars, I'm just trying to think of the least restrictive reserve we have and if there's any reason behind that.
So for restrictive, really, reserves are designated by council. So the council as a group could, could redesignate how those funds are, it would take a majority vote. Emergency reserve is really kind of just for emergencies where contingency reserve is kind of your operating ups and downs. So if you're in a downtime, you may pull from that contingency and then when it's up, you put it back. Emergency would be more like the storm drain from two thousand eleven. On the facilities reserve, and we were talking a little bit about this this afternoon. When we did the evaluation in two thousand fourteen, the recommendation was two to four percent of our replacement value, which at that time was seventeen and a half million. So that would be anywhere from three hundred and fifty to seven hundred thousand budgeted every year into that to cover the major repairs that you're talking about. We don't have that kind of funding, so we've never funded at that level.
Right.
That helps.
A couple of other points, I think, one is, is that we use the word purse trust fund. That's the same as this purse contingency reserve. They're the same thing. The trust fund, why we call it a trust fund is because it's actually held by a third party. And it actually, we are, by putting it in the trust fund, we're allowed to invest it in higher risk type investments to get a longer, to get, with a longer investment portfolio, to get a higher rate of return in it. So we do talk about putting funding into both of those, either the purse contingency or the facilities reserve. And the logic behind not putting more into the contingency or emergency reserve is, you know, primarily driven by the fact that we have a policy funding level on those. That, you know, we say we're going to have ten percent and fifteen percent in those funds. And so there is, in a sense, whether it's actually more restricted than the purse reserve or the facilities reserve, there's more of a restricted in that sense, maybe it's more politically restricted.
Right, I under, yeah, it just, okay, so somewhere in here, you mentioned that you are, that one of the recommendations is to move fifty-five thousand to the emergency contingency reserve. Is that correct, was that inside, it was in the budget?
So under the policy, we have the ten percent to emergency and fifteen percent contingency. Right now, based on what the balances are in those reserves and what our proposed budget is, they'll be underfunded if we don't add. So I think we need twenty-five to the emergency and thirty to the contingency, if I have that right, to get them funded at the proper level.
So the only, the only, only reserve we're not backfilling is the facilities reserve. If we don't do anything, so it's just the emergency and contingency that we're backfilling out of all the reserves, okay.
And we have an allocation to the facilities. We have the one oh eight proposed to go into the facilities reserve in this budget.
Right, 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 got that.
And, and the fifty-five thousand that I'm talking about for the two reserves is already out of that one point three million.
Right. And then the, regarding the children's fund, just a little note, I just want to make sure that we say early ed and youth programs because there's two very different things and that's not reflected in the budget. And then in addition to that, we, you were mentioning the twenty-two thousand for nineteen twenty. Are we anticipating the same amount for twenty twenty-one? I couldn't really figure that out from the budget because the decisions we make today for nineteen twenty.
Decisions made today for nineteen twenty, you know, when you look at twenty twenty-one, it comes down to growth in TOT. You know, if we can see growth in TOT, then there will be more in twenty twenty-one.
Well, but from what I see, it's going to be the same amount of TOT for twenty twenty-one. And so if we just kept everything as is and funded from the, the groups, the already the thirteen thousand, would it be safe to say that twenty-two thousand approximately would be the remainder in the dedicated children's fund?
I think that's a safe estimate. I, I, I would, you know, just, when we look at our revenue assumptions, particularly for the more volatile revenue sources, whether it's TOT or sales tax, the one thing I can tell you is, is that we're not going to get it exactly right. Invariably, you know, we can project a one percent growth and we'll see three percent growth or we'll see half a percent. So at this point, you know, it's kind of like the finger in the wind, it's probably where we think it's going to be, but, but it'll probably be a little bit different.
Well, one of council's goals or our intentions were to use one-time funding on one-time things. And so when I'm looking at that twenty-two thousand dollars, I just want to be mindful that we're funding.
Yeah, that's ongoing.
Right, okay.
So, and just, what will, what will be available next year will be dependent on what, how the community grant program plays out.
Right, do we have a timeline on that? I know the RFP went out, do we know when the deadline for completion for that is?
Larry stepped out, his timing is great.
No, he's doing that camera stuff.
Oh, I, I don't know. So I think, I think we're getting, hoping to get somebody on board here before the end of the fiscal year and then start the process this summer.
And then going back to the TOT and the budget, it's, it separates the BIA Capitola Village. So it says TOT and then a few lines down, it says BIA Chamber. On the revenue summary, under, under summary information.
Which tab were you on?
Uh, summary information in our budget. Under revenue summary. So are you, I guess we need page numbers, huh? Under special, special revenue funds.
Oh, interesting.
So I've noticed that they're separated and I was curious why.
So that, that's, that's a mistake. So look, we have, we have this, all these expenditures.
This is somewhere, there's revenue, she's on this side.
I mean, it's actually on every page. So if you continue through the revenue summary expenditure, so, I mean, it reflects.
So, so keep in mind, the BIA Capitola Village, WRF BIA, that figure, that's the BIA revenue.
The hundred and four thousand.
No, it's, we're projecting, yes, the hundred and four, that's exactly.
That's their total revenue with their assessments of about seventy-five thousand.
So under the TOT restricted revenue, what's the difference?
So what we did was we set up a special revenue fund for restricted TOT money. So all restricted TOT money will come into that fund. And then from there, we will either pay directly to youth programs in the grant programs, we will pay directly to the chamber or we transfer down to the BIA because the BIA already has their own fund, special revenue fund for their assessments. So it's a little bit funky in that some of it shows as revenue going in one area and then it's not really revenue to the BIA. It's more of a transfer that's approved by council. But they still have another seventy-five thousand dollars of assessment revenue that they program as well.
So the, the trick is, is to think a little bit like a government finance person. And if you take money from this pot and you put it here, you get money in this pot and then when you move it over here, you also get money over there. So it's hard to get your head around because it looks like effectively it's being double counted, if that makes sense. It's not double counted in, in the budget in terms of our overall numbers, but when you look at the totals.
Going from fund to fund.
When, yeah, money moving from fund to fund looks like revenue when, from a logical layperson's standpoint, you may not think of it as.
Both numbers are just accurate, but it's not.
They're accurate, but it's, it's hard to get your head kind of around, I think, if, if that helps. So the BIA, BIA Capitola Village, WRF BIA, that line that shows up in the special revenue funds, that includes both the money that they collect.
Thirty thousand from the above line already in there.
And the, the BIA assessment.
And their, their, their funds, got it.
Okay. And then you mentioned the impact on, for the mall redevelopment, revitalization, that's a time tester. And maybe this is just for, for, it's just a comment, that maybe that's worth working with the mall on. You, another, on your wish list of CIP projects was the forty-first Ave. I mean, it's worth the conversation to have, who knows, maybe they'll pay for it. But, and, and that could be a role of ours as well to, to talk to them about that in the future.
I, I think that's a great point. I mean, I do think that it's very typical for large-scale projects like this to include some off-site improvements. And those could be some that we would be working through them, working with them through the course of the entitlement process. And in addition, you know, I meant to say it earlier this evening, but I think, you know, I spent all this time sort of beating on the dangers of sales tax and our overreliance on sales tax. And I think that the mall project is one that we need to have some real conversations with the developers and as a council about is, is there are the ways to diversify the revenue stream off that project when it's done? You know, does it need to be, at this point, you know, the mall is essentially, other than business licenses, is a hundred percent sales tax generator. And when it's done, could it be still a revenue source for the city, but you know, potentially generating other kinds of revenue for us, whether it's TOT or, you know, some sort of special tax? There's, there's a number of different options that we can look at through the process.
And then my last comment is regarding the after-school pilot. I just want to, the original vision that I had, I would just stress that it's really important that we consider ensuring that this program is for all students, all kids in, in the area. And so moving forward, I know there's a definition here, but I don't know if that's, that's exactly what I was envisioning. And I just hope that we can keep that in mind, that it can, my idea was that it would be a continuous after-school program for the students to attend. And that it would be partially funded by the dedicated children's fund, but also in partnership with, with the school district. So we can offer low income, offer it for free to low-income families and so forth. So it's not just completely fee-based. So just something that I wanted to put out there.
Is that something, you mentioned the children's fund, is that something we can come back with a scholarship program or something, is that?
You know, I, from what I understand, it's at the early stages, since it's a pilot program, that there are a lot of community partners such as the school district, United Way, that could also offer some of these opportunities. So, you know, I, that's prob, that could be an op, an option, but I just don't know. Again, it's, the foundationally, what it is, it's, it sounds like it's, it's moving a lot of steps ahead. And again, I just want to make sure that it's clear what the, the model is before we, we move forward with approving it.
So would it be helpful for us to come back at the next budget hearing with more about the model? Would that be?
I would appreciate that, yeah. That's all, thank you.
Sure. I think it's important to recognize, you know, by reading through this, you know, we are in a lot of transition. I, you know, especially when I looked at Public Works, you know, we've gone from the full-time superintendent to the field. So it's hard to get a, a figure on how the budget works out on, on the annual basis. And I, I recognize in a lot of departments, I'm finally feeling after a lot of department head replacements and, and other things that we, we're very stable now going into this year, at least with our personnel. So it'll be easier to evaluate all these departments. On, to Sam's point, you know, when we, when we look at this, I mean, I appreciate the, the accounting and I know that from, from your perspective, this all is, is crystal clear to you, but for us sometimes. For, for me, when I'm sitting up here, we're right now trying to figure out that we've got this supposed excess money we want to allocate. And the helpful thing is, I think you're going to bring back to us is, we need to know, you know, if we're going to try to allocate some money to something, how much is already in there? You know, like our facilities fund, for example, you know, because there was talk at one time about, you know, how are we going to improve that? And then apparently our lease thing is not stable at the school district, so it's kind of hard to commit to putting more money in there, doing that. But on all these things, you know, it, it'd be nice for me to look at it and say, because, because my recollection right now is I'm, I'm, I'm feeling like this time last year, we were talking about the Rispin and, and you can maybe go back and look this up for me, but I thought we were thinking, well, the Rispin's funded, but we think we put, I think, my memory says we put more money in there last year because we didn't want it to fall short. And then now again, we're here and it's, we want more money because we think it's going to be short. And I'm thinking, I don't know that it's short, I think that maybe Steve might be clueless to it, like Park Avenue and Claire's. These projects doubled over time because what we thought was enough to do something is not enough to do those projects. I don't know if that's part of why you hinted that you might like another two hundred and fifty thousand for the Rispin because you don't think we're going to get it done for what we had. Because I remember last, I think by recollection is that we did put money into the Rispin last year just to, so we wouldn't be short. And apparently that's what I'm, what I'm perceiving. So like I said, when you come back, just let us know how much money we actually have in that fund and, and what your best guess estimate is next to it. You know, if you think the Rispin's going to be eight hundred thousand and we only have five hundred, then that means we're short three. And that's what we need to know because, you know, we're sitting here trying to figure out, we have one point, apparently five hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars to play with now by my best guess, if we, if we decide to, to allocate that. Uh, the other area that, that I had concern on was this, our, our parking and citations. You know, I mean, it, it's a major source of our revenue and I think we, we danced around it a little bit. But over the past two years, we had significant illness, injury, lack of full people on the street, lack of a complete revenue. I mean, it's, it's between the two of them, it's about one point two million dollars and they both suffer when we don't have those people out there. And I know, for, I'm reading it now, is I, I know there was a fifty percent Public Works guy that was going to be the fifty percent repair meter guy. And now he's fully into Public Works. So who's repairing the meters? Is it back on the, Public Works is going to be repairing the meters? Okay, so the, the two point.
Five.
How can I call it? Well, in the book, in the thing, it says two, we went from three FTA to two FTA and then we have a nine hundred and ninety hour, which is the part-time person, Gabe, for lack of a better term. I, I, I'm just wondering, I'm wondering, I guess I want to hear that, that you feel that if all those people are actually there and we don't have the injuries and that that is adequate to secure our revenue and citations from parking and citations. I guess that's what I'm wanting to hear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I, I do believe, you, you touched on it, Councilmember Bottorff, that we had during the peak season of the year this current year, a shortage of our two parking service officers due to injuries, about two and a half months' worth. And that, and that had the most significant impact on our revenues. Absent that, and they're healthy now, and good luck. If we have those two parking service officers and Gabe as our nine ninety or nine hundred officer, that is the staffing number that makes me comfortable as a police chief that we have the personnel available and working to manage that part of the program. In addition to Steve's employee, who helps out on a halftime basis, maintaining the systems and the parking meters and the, and the pay stations.
It sounded like a good plan and I'm, I'm optimistic that if we have a full year, like you say, that it would be prosperous. I think there is upside on, on especially the, you know, I, I know that when we went from the two hour to three hour, there was a drop in the citations. But I think that the stability of that, that probably will go up a little bit when we have people out there on the street. So I'm, thank you for reinforcing that, I appreciate that. And the last one is, is you touched on it briefly, this city council memberships. There was an increase from, I want to say twenty-eight thousand to thirty-five thousand, is that about right? And, and you, you, there were three things there that were in the, I wrote them down. One was E, BP, EC, CCC, and then the, the Jet Sky thing. I think those are the three memberships that we were on. I wrote them down on one of, oh, here we go, MBP, oh, there we, there we go. Can you tell me what those first two are?
So MBA, we joined, I want to say about five years ago. It's Monterey Bay Economic Partnership. It's a, you know, regional tri-county nonprofit that's trying to sort of grow regionally, do economic development. Bud Colligan, who you may know, was the founder of that. The Four Cs is the. Um, the Four Seas is the Central Coast.
The cost of that?
Fi, five.
Five thousand, okay, great.
The Four Seas is the Central Coast Climate Compact, is that correct?
Collaborative.
Collaborative. And we took that to council at some point, a couple of years back, to, about joining. And then the membership on that is.
About five.
About five as well. The Jet Noise Roundtable, I want to say about three?
Sounds about right. Okay, um, I know that, uh, that, that, that I weighed in on, on suggesting that we join that, but I also weighed in with it saying, I'm going to join, we're going to go for a year, and if I don't find it fruitful, we're not going to continue. And so, I'd like to get some feedback, whoever is involved, about the fruitfulness of our ten-thousand dollars in those two. I don't know if that would be through you or through somebody else, but the other two, just curious.
I think the mayor's been the primary contact, at least for the Four Seas. MBAp, I, I, you know, I attended a couple of their workforce committees early on and, and realized that there probably wasn't a huge value for me to attend their, their subcommittees. Um, so I haven't been an active participant individually, I don't think at a staff level we have. So, I think it would be a question for council, as if council is, you know, utilizing or participating in any of the MBAp.
I won't take any more time. I'll, I'll go ahead and talk to the mayor on that and, and get an update from him. That's all I got.
So, um, just to follow up on what Yvette said, um, I campaigned on youth activities also. And I agree, um, I want after-school activities, so that, like when I was, um, faced with my daughter coming home from school, where did she go? And that was a huge burden on us, uh, having a safe place and also having a place where, um, the kid could be doing activities I thought was fruitful for her at school, et cetera. Um, so I campaigned on this before I saw the, the new direction of our park and rec program. And I'm very pleased that, uh, we have new energy. And so I think, I probably agree with you. I'd like to see what the program is envisioned and, um, how it's moving along. Um, and then, um, what I thought before the election is definitely different than what I think right now. So, I welcome, you know, a presentation on the program and see what we're dealing with, okay? So I like to support the activity as it is now. So I have a few questions. I am scared, so you'll see some of my questions are going to deal with this, about our economic, uh, future that we're tied to, we're sort of being driven by what's surrounding us. So, um, the delta percent in the UAL, basically how much more we've been charged for the unfunded liability has gone up over, what, a hundred-and-forty percent or something like that? It's huge. That's in the last eight years. So, if we're going to have, um, an economic downturn, we're going to have to respond to that because that UAL will go up again. So, how soon do we know? How fast does PERS respond to the economic climate? I, I know they do smoothing in their projections, so I'd like to know how much time do we have to respond when we see what's happening, and then we know they're going to respond?
PERS issues their, um, actuarial reports each August. So we'll get a report this August, and it'll go through June thirtieth of twenty-eighteen. So, we have about fifteen months, if we're tracking what the economy is doing and what PERS investments are doing, we'll know about fifteen months, twelve to fifteen months ahead of time, which direction that should go. But there's a caveat to that, is that's just on the investment side. There's probably a hundred different assumptions in there that they can make as far as life expectancies, general health, um, the makeup of, of the age of the groups that are in there. So, it's hard to know, um, exactly when it's going to change. So when we get ours for August, it will be for next year. So yeah, probably, in reality, we get about six months.
Okay, so that's, that's a pretty tight, um, city manager.
Excuse me, the, the other thing about CalPERS is, to keep in mind, they probably, I would criticize them to some degree for this, but they're very, they like to phase things in over extended periods of time. And at times, that ends up meaning that we end up paying more? Because, for example, there's still, this UAL is phasing in the investment losses from two thousand and eleven, two thousand and ten. So, the, they, they try not to change too much based on year-to-year fluctuations in the market. And they try to smooth it out over time. So, we have this forecast, and this forecast has proven relatively accurate for the last four years, I would say. They've been marching along pretty close to what their forecast has been. Now the economy's been humming, so. In fact, some of these numbers have actually gotten a little bit better, um, with some of the returns we've seen. I think that, that the two-point-three in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five was two-point.
Two-point-five last.
Two-point-five last year. So, there is a smoothing, and so even if, you know, even if there's an economic shock, you know, we have some lead time with our actuarial, and then they phase these things in over time. So there's time to plan, but, you know, it's hard to plan for these kinds of increases regardless of how much time you have.
I see a question from Sam.
Yeah, on that, and, um, one, what, um, population do they use to determine our actuarial liability? Is it discreet to, uh, our staffing? It is, okay. And could we see, or at least I would like to see a copy of last August's report?
Yeah, I can get it.
On that, yeah.
They're available online, but I, I'll send you.
There, okay, great, thank you.
So the actuarial report doesn't actually pull out our employees, but it is, it's discreet to our employees. And that's actually a change from, um, how it used to be. We used to be pooled, it was called, with a bunch of other small-sized cities. Uh, unfortunately, when we got un-pooled and they actually did an actuarial for our employees and our retirees, the news got significantly worse. We actually benefited from the pooling substantially.
Well, I guess, and maybe I'll follow up with this, but if they don't, uh, in the report, if they don't discreetly identify, um, our staffing, um, how do they come up with our, um, independent, uh, unfunded liability?
So the report is public, it's on the internet, um, and it does break out, the, probably the closest it comes is to breaking out the accrued unfunded liability associated with retired employees for the city and active employees for the city. So you can see those two numbers, and most of it actually is retirees at this point. There's, um, relatively smaller portion of the unfunded liability is attributable to people that are still working for the city at this point. Um, but, so the actual spreadsheet, if you will, where they have an employee with how much they're getting and what their life expectancy is and everything else, uh, that isn't part of that report. That's the back-of-house stuff, that we don't, we don't frankly see.
So is the issue, though, is it longevity, um, or is it, um, um, earnings? Um, or a combination of the two?
I would guess combination. Okay. Earnings, earnings seems to impact when they have a good year, we will see it come down a little. Not as much as you would expect. If, if their target is seven or seven and a quarter and they're earning eleven or twelve, you'd expect a big dip, and we don't necessarily see that.
They smoothed it out over, as you mentioned, yeah.
When I was talking to our new auditors last year, the partner there said that he had gone through and done some, uh, auditing of CalPERS actuarial reports and saw a big variance in life expectancy. He said he saw some folks that had a life expectancy of like a hundred-and-ten years. And when he questioned it, and he said, well, there'll be medical advancements and people will start living that long. So they, they play a lot of games with a lot of different assumptions.
Now.
We can only hope.
At the lib, at the library board, uh, the finance director for the library is actually, um, Marcus Penntel for the City of Santa Cruz, so we, they, they do the work on contract for the library board. He was presenting the budget this year to the library board, and he was saying that based on his analysis, he believed that if CalPERS had actually just got index fund returns since two thousand and eleven, that they would be a hundred percent funded today. And, um, I followed up with him afterwards, because that was a pretty, pretty bold statement. And he talked to me a little bit, but I didn't see a lot of the backup. So, the question of what's driving the unfunded liability, is it changes in assumptions? Because they've changed assumptions. They've changed what they call their discount ratio, which is their assumed returns over time. The lower the discount ratio, they used to be at seven and three-quarters. They're going down to seven here shortly. Um, maybe they should be at five. But every time they bring that number down, it grows the unfunded liability. Every time you assume someone's going to live longer, it grows the unfunded liability. Um, conversely, if you get returns that are better than your discount ratio, your unfunded liability should shrink. So, all of these things factor in and play, play a part of the picture. But for sure, CalPERS's returns have not worked in our favor in the last, you know, since two thousand and eight.
Well, if you could, I, I mean, I would like as much information as you could, uh, provide me to, you know, be able to, uh, study that issue and determine whether or not we need to increase our PERS, uh, you know, trust account, so. Thank you.
Um, just before you move on, Mayor, to finish answering your question, they also provide a five-year projection in that CalPERS report and the actuarial report. And their projections for the next year are generally pretty good. So like this year, I have what is it going to cost this year and their projection for next year, and that's usually pretty close. It's when they get out into years three, four, and five, that it starts moving around, which is this year we saw a two-hundred-thousand-dollar decrease in the fifth year. It could change next year depending on how their investment earnings are. So we do have kind of a, a five-year projection, which we build into our model as well.
And they actually show it, um, based on different returns.
Yep.
Right? So, you know, they'll show with you if they get underperform, you know, what, what your UAL will look like over that five-year period if they overperform.
Okay, so I know, uh, UAL is going to go up, but I feel a little bit better that we have, um, some sort of, um, warning about how the cha, uh, how the change in the UAL is going to go, so that the city could respond and we don't have to abruptly change course. We could actually plan for things. Um, I note in your presentation that the workers at Capitola have, um, been following, um, good work procedures, and workman's comp has gone down because of that. I, I thank you very much. And I also know from the budget that, um, overtime, which I think police department is largely figuring in that, has also gone down. So my kudos to everyone on staff. Um, also I noticed in the budget, you anticipate a drop in sales tax when the work on the mall starts. So I asked you in the hall about this, I'll bring it here in the public. I was thinking that we could start slowly setting aside money in a special fund to deal with that, what we know is going to happen. So, just like in the UAL, if we have a sense that it's going to happen, then we can plan for it. Uh, we already know, um, depending on when work's going to start at the mall, that we're probably going to get a drop in sales tax. So, you know, maybe that idea can be developed and, and brought to the board here, and we could get a sense of if that's something for us to work on. So, um, in terms of cannabis, we have, you made a statement, uh, city manager, about the approval process. And I think it's a two-step approval process, so the police is working on that and reviewing it. And I appreciate that because we want to get the best choices possible. But also, isn't California state involved to some extent? It's not just us.
Mr. Mayor, that, that's correct. So the six-month window from when we give them their preliminary approval is to obtain all their permits necessary to begin operations, and that includes the land use and building permits necessary for us to issue locally. But as well, they also have to get their, uh, state licenses.
Okay. Um, Chief, is this something that you know about, because within your experience at all? And like, you're going to be choosing the best guys, uh, the best companies possible, and the vetting is probably going to make it easier for the state to approve, but do you have a sense of what we can expect?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor. Um, the police chief alone is not going to make the selection of the two cannabis retail.
I, I know, but you're part, you're driving it, sorry.
Um, with regard to the state, um, city manager is, is, um, accurate in that they have, um, the requirements that they get their state license in, in conjunction with the local, uh, CUP before they can operate. The state, on that topic, the state is, one year ago, I would not have suggested to our council that the state is necessarily efficient in that regard. Uh, they're a whole lot more efficient now because of some of the progress that they've made. So I'm comfortable that if the applicant, uh, has the proper, um, filings with the state, that it, that it should be a relatively efficient turnaround for that permitting, uh, in conjunction with our own local permitting. With regard to the process, um, as you mentioned, it's, it's a two-part process. Uh, Captain Dally, um, just took the lead internally on evaluating the fourteen applications. That was not an in-person evaluation, that was a, a, a methodical evaluation of the applications alone with two counterparts, one from, uh, our partners in HDL and one from a local Santa Cruz County expert in the industry. So that was the first part of the process. Uh, the next part of the process is an, an in-person, um, interview or we will receive a presentation from the six finalists, uh, six finalists of the fourteen total. Uh, that will happen within the next week or so, and we hope to be able to make a determination of the two that will go forward to the CUP process, uh, at that point. And so I'm comfortable with our process. I'm comfortable with my role as a chief of police here in understanding that process in that we will, uh, hopefully, uh, select the two licensees that are, um, viable, good partners in the community, and are able to generate the revenue, uh, under the cannabis retail, uh, licensing process that, that we would project. And I'm happy to answer further questions about the cannabis licensing, uh, kind of the state of the industry locally or, or, uh, within the state, or questions specific about the process, if you'd like.
Questions? No, I, I wanted to hear from you, uh, that you're comfortable with the process. And, uh, my sense is that there was some uncertainty in the approval process, and you've answered my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. Um, before you leave, um, I'm very excited about the, um, Neighborhood Watch program, and I hope in the future we can get, uh, a report on that, because, um, I think that's very good for the safety of Capitola and the interaction between the people who live here and our police department. It's only going to make things better.
We are excited as well. We, uh, we just scheduled our fourth, uh, Neighborhood Watch meeting in a couple of weeks. And so the community is becoming interested. I, I think that we're being effective in getting information out to the neighborhoods, generating some interest via Nextdoor, via, uh, uh, walking through the neighborhoods. Uh, we've made a, a good amount of progress over the last year. There's more progress to make, but I would look forward to the opportunity to come back to council and provide a presentation as to the status of Neighborhood Watch.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So I have a question for our recreation department directors. Excuse me, director, you got me on that the first time. So, I notice you're, you're seeking an accreditation, and I'm wondering what that all means. Are, are we going to be viewed better? Are we going to be more, um, apt to get grants? Or why did you do this?
Okay, yeah. Um, so the American Camp Association is a national organization that provides a set of professional standards and best practices for camps to, um, kind of measure themselves by. And so the accreditation process is reviewing each aspect of your business as a camp and trying to meet those best practices. And then through written documentation and onsite visitation while a camp is in operation by volunteers who also are in the business and are familiar with the standardized, the standard process. They come and they view your camp and assure that you are actually achieving all those standards, that your camp is, um, fitting those best practices, and in way, turning around and saying to the community that anybody that has an ACA-accredited stamp with their camp, that, that parents and families can trust that that camp is providing a good, safe, and progressive program for their camp or for their, for their youth. Um, and so, I'm hoping to bring that process to Camp Capitola in order to do just that, ensure that we have best practices and that we are providing a safe and progressive program for our youth.
Okay, because, because I remember when my wife and I were trying to figure out if Camp Capitola is a place for our daughter, and we were both at work, because we're a two-working family, and, um, so we're very concerned about that. So I think this should help, uh, people who are considering Camp Capitola. I think this, yeah, thank you very much, appreciate it. So, um, the roundabout, this is for Steve, the roundabout's been on forever, and, uh, how much more are we going to be waiting for PG&E to really give us? And I know there's an accumulation of funds that go into the undergrounding, but how really close are we?
PG&E has actually, uh, done probably thirty percent of the design work. Um, and at this point, we've run into a, another delay is trying to get AT&amp;T to participate in it.
Ah, okay.
So the whole undergrounding thing is, yeah, PG&E will do the design, but they don't necessarily bring along AT&amp;T with them. We've met, had a meeting with AT&amp;T, they are. We've met, had a meeting with AT&amp;T, they are, it looks like we're gonna have to re-adopt a, a undergrounding resolution for, to make them become a participant in this.
Okay.
Talking with other jurisdictions, undergrounding projects are, take about three times longer than you think they ever would, and unfortunately, we're kind of in that holding pattern right now.
Okay, so this is basically our service providers are not working well with us, okay.
They have their, they have separate, separate priorities than we do, I'll put it that way.
Yes, I can understand. Okay, thanks, 'cause often get that question, thank you. I should've asked you to stay up. In terms of the street sweeper, I often see the street sweeper go up and down, and no one moves their car, and everything seems to be still underneath the wheels of the car. So, is there any thought about having some sort of moving of the cars on a regular basis? So, we could do that, and it happens in most major cities, so the streets are clean. And I understand we get the money for the street sweeping, because we don't want the residue to go in the drain during the winter. So, I don't know if there's an option here.
You're right, larger cities do it, don't park on the side of the street every Wednesday and things like that. It would be quite a big effort to institute that. I think it would impact our residents greatly to move cars around. It's something we could certainly look at. We'd have to really get in there and redefine our street sweeper routes and try and define, 'cause you have to have them, give them one day on one side, one day on the other. Right now, we're just up and down the street in a day. Yes, we're in and out, but we, we try and vary it, so hopefully cars move, but that's certainly something we could look at.
How do people know when the street sweeper's gonna come?
They know just by living there. I mean, it's the same day of the week, usually around the same, same time. It's every other week for the residential streets. And we get a lot of calls that we're the street sweeper today, so I know people know.
Okay, we'll worry about that one later, thank you very much. In terms of the rail trail, so I'm a little surprised. I thought this is an RTC project, and, well, maybe, Steve, you're also gonna answer this. So, why are we putting money into this? I thought this was-
So, this is a connection from the Upper Beach Village parking lot up to Monterey, and then an improvement of that empty piece of property next to the rail track at Park Avenue in Monterey. It's not a, it's a very small portion of the rail trail, and of the $250,000, or, you know, $250,000, $200,000 of that is from the RTC, and $50,000 of it was kind of a matching fund that we have with it. So, it was, 'cause it's a benefit to us to get people, part of it is on our parking lot and going up to the, to the rail trail itself. It's a very small section of the rail trail that's getting built as part of this.
Okay, so I stood out, you know, I think I agree there is a benefit, 'cause I've stood out in the parking lot many times and asked residents, "Why are you walking up the hill?" And cars are coming in and out and stuff like that, and they prefer to go up the driveway and start down to the village at the top of Monterey. So, I think, in fact, you're right, that, you know, it'll take people off the driveway when cars are coming in and out.
Absolutely, I think that's how we identified it. But, but it's being treated at the RTC, so I'm not blaming them for this, as a part of a, you know, full rail trail project. We're, right now, we're stuck trying to get agreements to go in there and do some environmental studies to see what, you know, how much arsenic there is on there. And they're holding us up to see what kind of right-of-way and insurance certificates we're required to have. So, it's just being treated as a big project, even though it's a small project.
It's been going on for so many years.
Yeah, by way of background, this project was actually the first step of it. So, what this project was really intended to do, as our Public Works Director said, was get people in and out of Bat Cove less awkwardly. And the first phase of it was what we did here to get out of the upper lot, sidewalk that we put in if you're walking down the hill on the left-hand side. And that's what we wanted to do going up to Monterey. That would've been a much simpler alternative, is just get a sidewalk in. We would've had it up years ago. The problem is, there's just not enough width. And Steve and I were out there multiple times, measuring and squinting and measuring again, and trying to figure out some way to do it, and we realized the only logical answer was to take people up to the train tracks and then have, have a lot, head along the train tracks. Little did we know how challenging it was gonna be to get that done, because then it becomes an RTC rail trail project, which has a whole host of other issues rather than just being a simple sidewalk. So, the intent behind it is to find a safe way for people to get out of the upper lot going to the east. That's the goal.
Okay, and I know there are other issues that are somewhat contentious, but I do wanna emphasize that it is a safety issue, and especially at night, this might be beneficial. I don't know if we're gonna provide lights for night, but I agree that it is a safety issue. Thank you very much.
Sure.
So, I notice we're budgeting and anticipated revenue from the cannabis operations. Is the sense of what might happen to the former OSH store something that we could treat in the same way, because?
So, that is part of the reason why, you know, even though it looks like we have a sales tax decrease, that, that sales tax estimate was, is, we think about $100,000 better than we did this year, our best guess, and that's taking into account the re-tenanting of the OSH store.
It do-, it does, okay, it wasn't mentioned, so I just had to ask that, okay. So, if there is a downturn, you were talking about property tax is fairly stable and goes up two percent, 'cause of Prop 13, but also, if there is a downturn, folks tend to get their property reevaluated if there's a proposition that allows that to happen. Do you have any thoughts on that? You know, I forget the name of the proposition, but-
When I've seen that happen in the past was during the housing downturn. I think it was more in San Joaquin County, I don't know that there was a whole lot of reassessments in Santa Cruz County like there was in, in the rest of the state, but it typically, at least last time, it took a couple of years of prices dropping before they started reassessing.
Okay.
On, on an automatic, any, anyone can go in at any time and appeal their assessment and, and try to get it reduced. When the housing market crashed after the first couple of years, they just wholesale kind of did all of them, at least in San Joaquin County.
Okay, so the lag time is, is pretty slow, and probably this county doesn't really respond as much, like San Joaquin might have a bigger wiggle than we would, is that what you're saying?
So, I think the other key thing to keep in mind is, is that you're much more susceptible to that if you have large tracts of housing that are coming up into the market at a particular time, because, for example, if you've owned your house in Capitola for any period of time beyond two or three years, at this point, you have ten, twenty, thirty, forty percent, your assessed value's gonna be below what, what the actual market value is. So, there's a pretty large buffer for most people. It would really only be a situation where somebody had bought, you know, relatively close to the economic downturn, where they haven't built up that, that delta between the market value and the assessed value. So, because we don't have large tracts of houses that come up for sale in any given year, I think we're relatively insulated from that. And that was our experience during the economic downturn. I think we may have had like one year of zero property tax, but don't think it ever went negative like in other communities. I'm not sure, but if it did went negative, it was, you know, one percent at most.
Okay, I just wanted to understand a little bit more about the basis of your assumption there. So, I think in general, folks here have probably exhausted everyone in terms of questions. Are there any more questions of staff? Sam?
I have one more, thank you, Mayor. Wanted to just maybe ask for some additional information on the Home Program Reuse Fund. They have about a half a million dollars sitting there.
What, what program? I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's the Home Program Reuse Fund. And so, just maybe what are some eligible activities for that fund under the federal guidelines? I can see how it's been used in the past, but... So, that, that was just my, my one request.
We don't really have-
Okay.
That's a program reminder. We don't have $500,000, do we?
Oh, we don't? It's under-
Let me double check that.
It's under Special Revenue Funds.
We'll double check that, so-
We had a couple of account, our new auditors have a different take on how these funds are, are reported, and so we did some, they, they want us to book the outstanding loans as available assets, they're not really available assets. I thought I had cleaned all those up, so let me verify that that's-
Okay, yeah, maybe give us-
We go by cash balance, not the kind of outstanding loan balance.
Yeah, we can't spend the money that we've already loaned to somebody.
Right, yeah.
Well, let, let me double check on that.
We can't use it twice. Yeah, please, yeah, well, check in on that and follow up with us about maybe how much is actually, you know, sitting there in that fund balance. Thank you.
And I, yeah, I, I forgot a post-it question with all the, all of them up here. Under the Community Development Block Grants, and the Special Revenue Funds, again, it mentions the city has applied for 2.7 million in TDBG funds and anticipates receiving notification in 1819.
That's old language, we didn't get it.
Okay. And I am commenting for, and just requesting more information regarding the, the Children's Fund, but I don't know when we're ready for, if, when you're ready. Or do you want me to-
No, 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 you have the floor.
Um, so regarding the Dedicated Children's Fund, I know that there's the 22,000, what do you wanna call it, cert-, what's the right terminology?
Unbudgeted at this point.
Unbudgeted.
Yeah, unbudgeted, and so, again, I ideally would love to utilize some of those dollars for the after-school pilot program. So, again, I just wanna be clear that I would hope that the presentation coming forward talks about the sustainability of the, the pilot program, that it's a year-round program, not just a six-week program or staggered. I would hope that eventually the model would, would be something, when I say year-round, I'm referring to a school year, year-round program. So, that would be one of the things that I, I would like to see the dollars being used on. The other would to continue to fund the Santa Cruz Children's Museum of Discovery. And then, the third piece would be to look at the usage fees, possibly creating some sort of grant program for those who wanna come into the city to open up a childcare center. So, if a business wants to open, that we would, as a city, possibly waive those, those fees for them. I don't know what the number is, I don't know if we wanna come back with that next time on how much a set aside annually could look like or would have to look like in order to, to do something like that.
Wouldn't waive the fees, we would use the funds there to support the fee, the use of-
Yes, thank you.
So, I think we need more information. Also, as Jim said, the FAC, which met, I think, last night, wanted more information before they could make their recommendation, and I have to say, the discussion was pretty good, and so respecting the fact that they're part of this process, I think is definitely well-founded in terms of how the city works. Tomorrow, I might mention that we have a volunteer dinner, and the FACs are vol-, the FAC members are part of that volunteer service. I think we need, in general, besides more information, which I, I note that you've been writing down, a little bit more information about how the various programs are anticipated developing, what are some of the ideas on the table? Just like you bet, I campaign on youth activities too, so I'm very concerned about that. But I also wanna give professional courtesy to the person who's working on the program to come up with solutions that work really well. I understand that you're going out to all the organi-, many of the organizations in this area, and I believe you're trying to partner with them where you think feasible, and I respect that approach, because those organizations are already operating, and they have a footprint in the community, which means that people know about them, they have a track record, so I kinda like that approach. When I was campaigning and talking about what I'd like to see for youth, I also realized that the city is not in that business, and we'd have to partner with someone just to even get something off the ground. I think we'll, we have facilities, we have a community room here with the wifi, we'll have the library, presume, and J Street Park props could be a facility too, and I know there's issues with scheduling. So, I look very forward to, you know, a presentation, and Jim, I look forward to more information so that the FAC and this council here can make better decisions. And I appreciate both of your presentations, the state of the city was good. I think anyone listening got a pretty good idea of where we stand. And Jim, I think you wanted to detail that's very important for us, and I think everyone had an ample opportunity to ask questions. No more questions? Sam, you're sure?
Oh, for now, I'm, I'm fine, uh, well- Maybe one, but-
I couldn't resist.
Did you guys get what you needed from us from tonight? I noticed it said, you know, next steps, and tonight it says identify budget issues to follow our directional uses for the youth fund. You're all good?
We're good, we have some ideas for the youth fund that we can bring back some more details. We have a bunch of questions and more information we can develop and bring back slides for our next hearing.
Good, all right, thank you.
Okay, if that's it? Ed?
Nope.
Okay, you're in the meeting, thank you very much.